Good evening, everyone. Dr. Garcia, I can hear myself. Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. This is an open public meeting of the Neptune Township Board of Education. In accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, adequate advanced written notice of the meeting was made by posting the schedule of meetings in the main floor lobby of the Board of Education Administrative Offices and by delivery to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Neptune Township Municipal Clerk. Advanced electronic notice has been made on the district's website, consistent with Bylaw 0164.6. In order to abide by the Open Public Meetings Act, Board of Education members may use their digital devices to follow the agenda, report out from meetings, and view agenda background materials, but not to communicate with each other or anyone outside of the meeting. Fire exits are located in the direction indicated. In case of fire, you will be signaled by bell and/or a public address system. If so alerted, please move in a calm orderly fashion to the nearest exit. Postings have been placed on the bulletin board for everyone's use. Please do not remove the postings. You may obtain free copies of these documents from the district website or purchase copies by writing the Board of Education offices. During the public session of the meeting, parties having comment are requested to address the president. The public is advised, in accordance with Bylaw 0168, an unofficial audio recording of this meeting is being made. Pursuant to State Statute NJSA 26:3D17 and Neptune Township Board of Education Policy Regulation 7434, no smoking is permitted on Board of Education property. As a reminder, Neptune Township School District is a community for all learners, where we value opportunity, diversity, and accountability. Ms. Della Salla, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Hubbard?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Ms. Perrier?
Excused.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Madam President.
Thank you. Please also note administration that is present. At this time, I invite you to join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join us in rising and saluting the flag.
The flag of the United States of America is the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
So, good evening again, everyone, and thank you for coming out this evening. I want to take a brief moment to remind you that we are all examples for our students, not just for each other, and young people who may be listening, watching, or learning from our actions. Passionate disagreement and strong opinions are welcome in any democracy, and this Board values community input deeply. However, personal attacks, name-calling, and hostile language do not reflect the kind of respectful dialogue for which we strive. When we engage in that kind of behavior, we risk modeling it for our children, our students, showing them that disrespect is acceptable when emotions run high. Let's remember that our words matter. Let's choose to disagree with dignity, express concerns constructively, and demonstrate the kind of civility we want our kids to carry into our schools, our homes, and our communities. I thank you in advance for helping us to create a space that is respectful, productive, and worthy of the young people that we care so much about. Dr. Crater, Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I will keep my comments brief as I know we have a number of people who hope to speak tonight. I do want to welcome everyone back to school. We have had middle school orientation, high school orientation, our first beginning-of-the-year admin council meeting. Just a reminder that information has been sent out about electronic access to bus passes, free and reduced lunch forms, and emergency contact information. Our teachers and staff come back on Tuesday of next week. We have preschool orientation next week, and our students come back on Thursday. Again, welcome back. Please check the calendar for back-to-school nights. They are all on the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crater. Ms. Harris, can you move our minutes, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Being resolved that the Board of Education approved the minutes of the work session of July 28, 2025, special meeting from the NJSBA training session of July 30.
Can you make sure that your microphone is on, Ms. Harris? Your microphone is not on.
Thank you, Madam President. Being resolved that the Board of Education approved...
Are you speaking? Maybe move it closer to your mouth so that they can hear.
Thank you, Madam President. Being resolved that the Board of Education approved the minutes of the work session of July 28, 2025, special meeting from NJSBA Training on July 30, 2025, and the regular meeting of July 30, 2025. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Harris, seconded by Vice President Thompson. Board members, any questions? Ms. Della Salla, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Della Salla. Before we go into our public comment, I have a couple comments that I'd like to make. I'm going to read a statement. I am also going to present some information to you based on the wealth of misinformation that has been shared via social media. But rest assured that everyone who desires to speak will have the opportunity to do so. Those of you who were with us last month, you will have heard this first message, but I'm going to reiterate it because I think it's important to do so. There has been a great deal of social media attention given to the recent tax increase in the tax levy. Over the past six years, our district has experienced a loss of more than $25 million in state and federal funding, while the Department of Education continues to shift the financial burden of public education to local taxpayers. In addition to making extensive cuts over the last several years, we have trimmed all accounts and managed to stay within the same budgeted amount for that same time period. That is no longer feasible. We are facing a 25% increase in health care, prescription drug costs, a 30% increase in utility expenses, rising transportation costs, and the escalating tuition for charter schools, now totaling over $4 million annually. We are also responsible for expensive out-of-district placements for students requiring specialized services. The public was invited to a special meeting held on April 8 of this year to learn more about the district's financial situation. At that meeting, Dr. Crater explained the limited options. Keep in mind that our buildings were built with Abbott funding and are not technically owned by the district. Any profit from the lease or sale of these buildings reverts to the School Development Authority. Although some members of the public have criticized the Board of Education for not making unpopular or hard decisions, the decision to raise the taxes beyond the cap is the hard decision. Without this tax levy increase, we would have had to cut 40 positions, cancel programs, provide less transportation, and increase class sizes. We are also bound by former Abbott statutes and codes which further limit our class sizes. This was also discussed at not only this year's budget hearing on April 30, but has been discussed each and every year since the S-2 bill was passed in 2018. Despite what you may see on social media, Neptune Township School District is not a failing district. Our students continue to achieve and grow in extraordinary ways. They are thriving in advanced placement and honors programs. They are earning college credits and preparing for their future with support of highly skilled educators. We provide real-world experience for career exploration, and for the 10th consecutive year, we have been named the best community for music education, celebrating our commitment to the arts and to the education of the whole child. We have built strong partnerships with major colleges and universities, providing our students with expanded opportunities, dual enrollment courses, and early access to career pathways. Our connections with local businesses and organizations continue to enrich our schools and ensure that our students are deeply connected to the community. While our standardized test scores may not fully always reflect the high expectations that we set for ourselves, they are just one measure of student learning. They do not capture the deep, meaningful work that happens every day in our classrooms across our district. Despite these pressures, our school remains strong because of the dedicated teachers, administrators, and support staff and the ongoing partnerships our families and community members have with us. We are seeing our students earn recognition at the local, regional, national, and state levels for academic excellence, artistic talent, athletic achievement, and service to others. We remain focused on continuous improvement, responsible stewardship for our resources, and our unwavering commitment to providing a high-quality education for every student. We are proud of what we have accomplished and confident in our path forward because we know that success in education is not defined by a single test, but by the strength of the system, the passion of our people, and the opportunities that we create for our children. Based on some recent social media posts, I would like to share some information so that those of you who are with us here in person and those who have decided to join us online will be equipped with facts, not feelings and falsehoods. There's been a lot of conversation regarding our superintendent's salary. It's important to note that for the 24-25 school year, Dr. Crater, who holds a bachelor's degree, master's degree, and doctoral degree, as well as 36 years of experience, was earning $203,799. Now, you may say, "Woo, that's a lot of money." But guess what I'm going to provide for you? I'm going to provide for you other districts in the county and salaries, and we are nowhere near the top. Manasquan, they have one superintendent, $234,000. Long Branch, $233,000. Homedale, $229,000. Wall, $226,000. Madawan Aberdeen, $221,000. Rumsen Fairhaven, $219,000. Keansburg, $215,000. Ocean Township, $210,000. Neighboring Asbury Park Acting Superintendent, who has less than half the number of students that we do, $209,000. It is also important to note that Dr. Crater was recognized as the Monmouth County Superintendent of the Year as well as in the top three superintendents in the state of New Jersey. Okay. People are talking about the Board of Education is not making cuts to administration. So I'm going to provide you with some additional facts. Over the past few years, 17.5% decrease in state aid cut the time period. So we cut 100 non-administrative positions, which represents 15% of our non-administrative staff. If you look at the Comparative Spending Guide of New Jersey, so you don't have to take my word for it, again, that's the Comparative Spending Guide of New Jersey, we rank number 37 of 74 of the districts in our spending category as it relates to administrative costs. That's in the middle. Some of the cuts that we have made are one principal, a school safety coordinator, assistant facilities manager, truancy officer, professional development coordinator, ELA department chair, science department chair. And that doesn't include previous tough decisions we had to make to remove reading coaches. As we stated in my prior message, our new facilities were funded by the School Development Authority, and our school district is listed as one of 31 former Abbott districts, which is a reference to the state's poorest urban districts. For your reference, we have about 70% of our students who receive free and reduced lunch. We've heard rumors that people believe that you're going to start having to pay for pre-K. That is false. Pre-K is a fully subsidized program by the state. The Aquatic Center. The Aquatic Center was built with SDA funds. All other costs were borne by the district. It opened in 2010 and is currently self-sustaining. In addition, the pool provides a great service to a community that is located near the shore. The next topic, attendance. Now, attendance is something that we don't have control over as a school district. We can encourage and ask our students to come to school, but we can't make them come to school. So we have tried to put incentives in place to encourage our older students to come to school. So let me go over our absenteeism rates. New Jersey's average chronic absenteeism rate is 14.9% for the 23-24 school year. Ours was 26.9%. Like districts, Freehold Regional was 25.5, and Long Branches was 22.5. Now, I'm not sharing this information to point fingers, but I need you to realize that this is not an isolated situation to Neptune Township School District. It is a bigger issue with students and getting them to come to school. We have also increased, as a motivation, our courtesy busing over the last two years to assist with parents who may have to work and they can't drop their students off at school, and they're concerned about them walking on busy highways or areas where there might not be adequate sidewalks. Our absenteeism rate, we acknowledge, continues to be a challenge. Currently, Dr. Crater is in talks with Hackensack Meridian and other organizations to secure funding to support reopening our wellness center in hopes that this will also provide further intervention for our families who have the greatest need. I'm going to share, lastly, some facts about our Board of Education. Those of you who are sitting before you, there is a wealth of misinformation about the people that you see sitting here. This Board is comprised of nine Neptune Township residents. We represent neighborhoods throughout the township. None of us receives any form of compensation, not even a stipend. Zero dollars. Four of the nine Board members are senior citizens on a fixed income. Three of the nine Board members have children in our school district. Three of the nine Board members do not have any children, are and are also single-income-earning taxpayers. I'm one of those. More than half of our Board of Education members have college degrees. Six of the nine Board members have worked in a school district, so they are very familiar with education and its processes. Hopefully, that has clarified some of the misinformation that you have heard, and I encourage you to share it with your friends and neighbors. At this time, I'm going to read the public comment statement and open the public comment. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience when the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and, in many cases, by unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent of schools is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to members of the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate Board Committee. The members of the Board Committee work with administration and the superintendent to assure that the matter is fully understood. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is then presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda at a public meeting. All personnel motions are at the recommendation of the superintendent. All agenda postings are available for public review. In rare instances, matters are presented before the Board of Education at the same meeting that final action may be taken. Time will be allotted now for public comment. Each speaker will be given three minutes when recognized by the presiding officer. Individuals wishing to address the Board shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their names, their addresses, and the organization, if any, that they represent. Although the Board encourages public participation, it reserves the right through its presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The Board will not respond to questions during the public participation portion of this meeting involving the employment appointment, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of, promotion or disciplining of any prospective prospective or current employee. The floor is now open for comments.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Debbie Terrell. I live at 106 Willow Drive. First and foremost, I would just like to extend a thanks from our family for any Board member that attended this celebration of life for my brother, Coach Tom Walsh. If I didn't get to talk to you that day, I do apologize. It was a very overwhelming, emotional day, but if you attended, thank you so much for your attendance. I am back here again because I came to you with a request last month to name the weight room after my brother. I have not gotten a response to that, so I'm just following up with you to find out if you have an answer to that yet.
Do you want me to explain the policy?
Yes.
So, just so you know, did you check online for our policy?
No.
I encourage you to do that. If you can't find it, call me or email me, and I'll show you because you have to put this request in writing, first of all. And then I would like you to review the policy. There are certain parameters within which Board members have to stay according to policy, and then you and I can talk.
Okay. Why wasn't that explained to me last month? Because I would have gladly have written a letter by now to you.
I apologize if we didn't. That was an omission.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. Madam President, I'm talking about misinformation. I just maybe you can clarify a couple numbers.
Sure.
With regard to the proficiency rate, I'm sorry, Keith Funo. I live at 26 Cliffwood Drive. You got it? Okay. With regard to proficiency rates, tell me if this information is incorrect or not. With regard to math, it's 21%. With regard to ELA, it's 32%.
So that may be correct. I don't have those numbers in front of me. That does sound correct. But you also need to look at the growth level because that's an important indicator of how the district is doing. The state establishes growth targets for us for each year. We have finally, since 2023, maintained our growth targets, reached those growth targets.
Thank you. With regard to graduation rate, is 66% in the ballpark?
So that was last year. Our unofficial graduation rate for the class of 25 was 87.58.
Okay, class of 25, okay. And there's this rating that the state does with regard to districts. There was a number there that says something about Neptune being 535 out of 613. I don't know where those numbers came from, but do you get ratings with regard to other districts in the state as a comparison?
We get, if you look at, Ms. Jackson mentioned the Comparative Spending Guide. If you go on that, you can look at all of the areas within our budget and the spending ranking. But we don't necessarily, I don't receive a rating.
Okay. And you did touch on absenteeism. Seems to be a big problem. 27%
Nationally.
Is a large amount of students we're losing. And the last question. Is it accurate to say it's like 32,000 per student spending?
That's inaccurate. I thought I might be asked that question, and it does depend on where you look. So if you look at the School Performance Report, which is the DOE's publication based on our input and our budget, the cost per pupil is $23,036. If you look at the Comparative Spending Guide, they say it's $21,499. So we're comparative to, or comparable to, Long Branch, Asbury's 30, and then you can see that in the Comparative Spending.
Okay, great. And then my last question with regard to the application. What was the date of the application to the state with the tax levy?
It was before the deadline, right?
Oh.
It was a deadline.
Are you talking about the application to increase the tax levy?
Yes.
I don't recall what the date was.
I don't.
Was it about April? I mean, I think you were talking about...
It was after March 19. I know that because we had to submit the original budget.
And how long did you have to wait until you got approval from the state?
We just got approval. We just got approval.
Two weeks ago.
We had unofficial approval from the county VA, but we got our official letter just recently.
Okay, I'm getting cut off. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your questions.
Hello, my name is Paul Zapta. I live at 85 Pilgrim Parkway in Ocean Grove. I just want to say that a gentleman raised the 32,000 number. That came right off the Department of Education's website. So, you know, it's not the place to debate it. Maybe we should talk about it later. But that's the numbers that were reported to the...
Tell me what that document is you're holding.
It's a chart that I got. It's a chart that I got. The numbers all from the Department of Education, State Department of Education.
Do you know what it says at the bottom? It usually says a title.
No, just a source, Jersey State Department of Education.
So, what site did it come from? Do you know?
It came directly from our legislative office.
Okay, legislative office.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, that's good.
That might help. In any event, I want to read a statement, because I think it's important. And, you know, I want to thank you very much for sharing all that information you did. It was a lot of good information, and I'm hoping that maybe you can publish that information, because one of the responsibilities, I think, here is to make sure you raise public awareness of what you are doing, and I think there is a lot of debate going on. So, you know, I want to just read a statement. I hope I can get through it here. There's been a large volume of opinions being expressed on Nextdoor and other social media regarding the recent huge tax cuts, right? Some of the posts border on really what's unacceptable personal attacks. Frustration's running extremely high amongst all stakeholders, and the blame game is in full swing, right? The state's at fault, our legislature has dropped the ball, the Board of Ed failed to prepare for cuts, the Township Committee hasn't done enough, right? We could go on and on and on and on, right? And I'm not going to, I don't think I have enough time to go through this whole statement, but I want to basically say here that enough blaming, right? You can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. Whatever's happened has happened, and what we need to be doing here is, instead of debating the past, we need to talk about the future. And we need to talk about this issue, because it's too important to be sidelined by who should have spoken up and when they should have spoken up, right? Living here in this township is rapidly, rapidly becoming unsustainable for seniors living on a fixed income and most residents who live on a budget. How in God's name do you budget and prepare for increases in taxes ranging from 18% to 50% over the last two years? How do you deal with the emotional impact of dealing with the real possibility of being forced to move from what you thought was your forever home due to it becoming unaffordable, right? We need to take the emotion out of the issue. We need to find a way forward, and the choice is to speak up now and to work together. We need to work together to make this a livable and sustainable situation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Zapta, I thank you for that, and since we have a full house, I will encourage everyone here, as we have been doing since 2023, to lobby your legislators in Trenton for a fair funding formula. That is something that we can all do. I mentioned last month that every resident receives a school scene. You receive it every three months or so, sometimes every four months, but definitely you get three of them each year. Since 2023, Dr. Crater or myself have dedicated our columns on the front page of the school scene to this budget situation. So, when people say they don't know about it, it is not because the board, the administration, the educators are hiding the information. You're not reading the information that has been shared with you. Additionally, Dr. Crater has used her column biweekly in the coaster to not only tout the positive things that are going on in our school district, but to explain some of the tax situations that were on coming down the pipe. So, you can't say you didn't know. Now, if you didn't read, okay, everybody's busy, we get that, but we have not been hiding information. We haven't done any of that. I like your suggestion. We appreciate people coming with solutions. As I said, everyone on this board, board members are taxpayers. Some board members own multiple properties and are taxpayers on multiple properties. So, we are feeling the increase as well.
Well, good afternoon. Well, good evening. Felicia Simmons, seems like I got here just on time, Asbury Park. I was here last month. I'm here again this month, because I continue to hear the chatter, and I commend you for the job that you're doing. I don't believe people understand the perfect storm that we are here in Monmouth County between the S2 and ADA property assessments every year. Between the S2 bill was the funding, and like I said last month, there is no one in this state that is fairly funded with this S2 bill. There is no school district, there's pushing districts to close, they're pushing districts to bankruptcy, and it's the state. It's literally our legislators here in District 11 that has pushed this, and our legislators here in District 11 that is absolutely the head of the Education Board, right? They're the head in District 11, right, of Education, our state senator. So, please call him and ask for fair funding, not just for the S2, but for the ADA, assessments of your property every year. We are the fastest growing, fastest growing area in the state of New Jersey. So, when they don't understand when your taxes go up $5,000 a quarter, $4,000 a quarter, $3,000 a quarter, right, that is because of all of these things together. I understand that it is not you. It is the situation that we're in. And here in Monmouth County, we're the only place where we assess our properties every year. Now, understanding that there's the fair funding, but that's something that has to be targeted, and it's not by you. So, I commend you when you tell us to go and call our legislators, because it is literally our legislators that are harming us and pushing us out of here, right? I use the example of my mom who bought her forever home because she was retiring and she couldn't afford a condo in Asbury. So, she bought it right here in Neptune, which we're from originally anyway, right? So, she bought it for $219 seven years ago, and she thought it was great. She could retire, she could be happy, she can afford it for the rest of her life. Now, it went up seven years late. She retired two years ago. It went up to about five and some change, right? So, now she's pressing, and she's sitting there like, oh, what is she going to do if it goes up again another 400 or $300,000 in the next couple of years now that she's on a fixed income? And the problem, and that comes from her assessing her property and is fast thing, the S2 bill, and it puts us in a bad situation. It is not you. I understand it is not you. You have no other choices with the prices going up and us being under this perfect storm. But I think we need, we're in the wrong meeting. I see this room full of people in the wrong meeting, and we need to be in the county. So, thank you. Have a good day.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Waddell. I live at 13 Rowan Place in Neptune City. Although I'm not a Neptune Township resident, these changes to increases also affect us, because this is our sending district. We send our students over here. We too received our tax bill this week here, and Neptune City was hit pretty hard, maybe not as hard as Neptune Township has been hit. I don't put the blame on the board. I think what's happening is completely unfair. I think that has been, many Boards of Education have been put in the same predicament you've been put into, where essentially it's either do this or not be able to operate, and I think it's been unfair. I think this comes down from the state. Even the mayor of the town has said this is a state issue, not a board issue. I do ask you to be a little bit patient with the people here in the audience here. I sat up there like you guys did. I was the mayor of Neptune City. I know what it's like to have people come in and be angry with you. Understand these people are emotional. We are the highest property taxes in the nation, not one of the highest. We are the highest property tax in the nation here in New Jersey. We're the only ones. We are, on average, over $10,000. We're also one of the highest energy cost states in the nation. We are now number one in auto insurance. We are number two in health insurance. So, these people are really, they're getting crushed, and so they're really frustrated. Whether you deserve that, you probably don't. I'm up here because I also want to reiterate what she said over here. This is a problem from our state legislature. I am currently a candidate for state legislators, and this is one of the main reasons why I decided to run for state legislature. I'd also like to note that I don't think anybody in here has a problem with the teachers in this school or educators. My son is currently a senior at Neptune High School. I'm an alumnus of Neptune High School as well. Actually, Tim Jones was my son's history teacher and did a wonderful job here, so I do commend the teachers and the job they do, and I know what a wonderful job, you know, that the entire district has done altogether. But I would like to keep in mind that this is something that needs to be pressed. Don't keep up on your legislators. Don't let them go. I see in there that he's taking steps to reach out to them. That's good. Don't let them breathe. No matter who's there, after November, keep on top of them, because the S2 funding formula, nobody understands. I think if I ask anybody here, and this is not a gotcha question, explain to me how the S2 funding formula works. Could anybody answer that question? Can anybody answer that question? No, I think maybe two people in New Jersey know how to answer that question. So, the problem here is that we really need to keep our elected officials honest and keep pressing them for the questions, because you can't just cut schools by tens of millions of dollars over a short period of time and expect them to operate. This is not an accident. It's done by design. It's done to hurt school districts. It's done to hurt teachers. It's done, it hurt students. So, I implore you not to let up and keep on top of your state legislators and make sure that they do the right thing by our students, by our teachers, and by the hard work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Nigurney, 58 Embry Avenue. I heard all of your backgrounds, but I didn't hear anybody with a finance or accounting background, and so...
So, I can explain to you. We're Board of Education members.
I understand.
We don't operate the district. We have a business administrator who's responsible for that. So, if you have specific finance questions, we can either answer them if we are able, or we can provide that information to you at the close of the meeting or during this week if you provide us whatever your questions are.
No, it's not a specific question, but I'm just curious as to how the budget is set when taxes are going up, when you're coming up with a budget that's 30% above the year before. How do you come about that? And I understand you have budget cuts, but I also understand that the district has lost about 1,000 students, but I don't see cuts commensurate with that cut.
Well, that's actually not accurate. We've cut about 107 positions in the last six years, and as the gentleman over here said, if this legislation had been passed and implemented over a 20-year period, we wouldn't be having this discussion, because the reductions would have taken place over time. To answer your question about the finance background, I heard some of that today through social media. We have an entire business department. They have degrees in school finance, right? We also don't depend on just us. So, we have Board of Education who provides oversight, and we administrators run the district. The business office, along with me and the assistant superintendent, organize the budget. We go very carefully through the budget. We share it with the county business administrator, but we also have auditors that are paid, third-party auditors, that come in a couple of times a year. They've been here for two weeks this month, looking at all of our financial records, looking at our accounting. We've asked them also this year to provide us with a long-term projection of where the district's finances will be next year, the year after, the year after that, because we, it matters. We have to look very closely at what we're spending, and we have been. We've cut and cut to the bone at this point. So, yes, to answer your question, we do have a very strong and very well-educated and skilled business department.
And the 40 positions that you looked at that you didn't cut?
We cut 15 of them based on enrollment decline, because we would have had to anyway. But without the increase in tax levy, many of those accounts would be very risky, health insurance being one of them, utilities being another one of them. So, we cannot run out of money.
I understand. Is there a way to increase the premiums for staff on the health insurance? Because that's a big thing for all of us. We're all paying a lot of money for our health insurance.
We do have a contract. We are obligated to fulfill the terms of that contract. But just to speak to what we are doing and planning, I mentioned the auditor. We're talking a little bit about looking at all possible, under all possible rocks, right? So, we had our first budget task force meeting today, and that's just administrators, and that committee will expand as we start to do some research. We're researching transportation. We're researching, would the reconfiguration of some of our schools help us in terms of personnel costs, transportation costs, facilities costs, right? We're looking at all of those items. We're looking even at program delivery. Can we deliver the programs that we're delivering in a way that is less expensive but doesn't compromise the quality? So, we're doing all that you would expect us to do.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard Terrell, 106 Willow Drive, alumni of the township school system here. Now, back in 85, if I remember, a student had to be in school 160 days, if I was correct. Has that number changed? Because you said you have no control.
It's 180 days.
It's 180.
180. So, how can you not have control over a student not coming to school is my question?
So, I made that remark. What I'm saying is, we don't live in the homes with the students. So, student, there are lots of situations that prevent students from coming to school. Some students may come to school, may leave because they have to care for a sibling. Some students have to work. Some students are the parent in the household. So, we, as a school district, we can encourage the students to come. We can try to stress the importance of education to the families, but we can't go to the home and drag the child out and make them come to the school.
So, my question...
That's above our purview.
Okay, so then my question is, what do you do about these children that who are not graduating? You just drop them off the rolls, or they no longer count?
I didn't understand.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Okay, so, I thought you were talking about chronic absenteeism. That's something...
I know chronic absenteeism. I was that in 1985. I missed 30 days and didn't graduate until 1986, because you guys refused to take the doctor's note. It's not your fault.
I wasn't here then.
So, you were in school with me.
Yes.
A 1983 graduate.
Right, I remember Dr. Legg, Dr. Christie, those guys saying, no, that doctor's note's not good enough, but thanks for playing for the high school anyway. So, that's what I'm trying to express here. If you couldn't control it back then, why can't you control it now?
I think what you're asking about is how many days we have to be open. We have to be open 180 days, but kids do lose credit if they miss over a certain number of days.
That's what I'm saying. So, how, if they're losing credit, does that count against Neptune as a graduation or a number?
It does.
So, how many of those kids do we have every year that don't bother coming to school because, one, one, I was one of those children who didn't find it interesting enough to come to school? What are we not doing to make it interesting enough for them to come to school? We've cut a lot of programs. You've cut some science programs. You've cut other programs, and you brought them back. But maybe we should think, and I hate to say this, maybe we should turn down some of our sports programs and maybe bring them, cut them back a little bit. Yes, I know, I know, but let me explain something to you. I play sports, and not all of us are good enough to get on to this professional sports things. We also need to learn about safety and things like that. So, what do we need to do? Do we need to bring back small motors, things like that, to make people think who want to be belong? How do you promote vocational education and also provide another way besides the people? You got to go to college, because not everybody who comes from here goes to college or can afford to college, even though they may be smart enough to go. Ah, you don't have the money.
So, it's great that you mentioned that prior to COVID and even after COVID, we were working as a district to bring back the trades, because we understand the importance. COVID kind of derailed that, and then the loss of S2 funds. When you're faced with, in one year, losing $4 billion, it is very difficult to introduce trades. So, what did we do? Dr. Crater and I met with Local 400, and we tried to partner with them to establish an apprenticeship program. So, we are trying to do things for our non-college-bound learners.
Okay, look...
Aware that that's necessary.
Local 400 is a what? I know it's a union, but to where? What union?
IBW, I believe.
Electrical Workers Union?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, Wall Township.
Thank you. That's what I was asking. I know they were a union, just a kind of union, and I appreciate that.
They also work with the plumbers and planters. We have them at our career days, and so...
And I'm glad for that.
We are doing that.
Because it was the trades that kept me here in school in Neptune. That's all I wanted.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, I'm Mary Owens from 21 Atlantic, Ocean Grove, and I just wanted to, again, concentrate on the attendance. I was in school. I'm a retired school nurse, and when I worked at a school in Montague, they had a very big attendance problem. I went in, and we worked with the courts, and the courts brought the children to, you know, the parents to court after so many days, because a child that's not going to school is a child that's not learning. So, now the test scores go down, and so this is what's happening. We got to be responsible for these children and not just say, well, the parents won't get them to school, or they don't want to come to school. There is a law that between the ages of six and 16, these children should be in school, and somebody should be monitoring this, because this is neglect. So, we would have, after 20 days of no doctor's notes, no whatever, we would bring in, and the first time that I ever went to court, we brought in, I think, 50 families. By the end of the year, three. So, this is what was happening. They were fined. They were also visited. If there's a child that absolutely cannot come to school, somebody needs to get out there and educate them in their home. But you've got to do something. You can't just say, children don't go to school, and, oh, well, and then our test scores go down. So, I think it's not taxes, it's more the children, and I think these children need somebody to look after them.
So, ma'am, I would, I thank you for your comment, and it's important to note that we do have a chronic absenteeism plan. We have a plan. And for most districts, after 10 consecutive days, the student could technically be dropped, right? So, we do have people who do home visits. We have, like I said, the incentives, but most importantly, when, and Dr. Crater can speak to this... But most importantly, when, and Dr. Crater can speak to this, the climate has changed in terms of the courts and what penalties courts will assess to families for the students not going to school. It equates now to a slap on the wrist. That enforcement is not the same that it was before. So we have, I have a page here, I think it's on the district website, what our plan is as it relates to chronic absenteeism. I can share some of the things. We structured this so that we could identify the potential barriers for student, barriers to student attendance. So our staff members play an important role in assisting, helping us to model positive school attendance. And they assist us with identifying potential families who might be on the verge of an attendance problem. So we don't wait till they've missed a score of days. We're monitoring and the process. We're meeting with them, with our, I'm not, our school, our administrators are, our teachers are, our guidance members are, to try to be, take action rather than wait and see. So we're more active voice than passive voice. We are working to partner with not just our families, but organizations that can provide our families with the supports that might relieve the reasons why they're not able to have their students come to school. So we are looking at the broader picture. But Dr. Crater, this came up, and she can speak to what's happening with the courts when unfortunately we do have to go to court.
Okay. So things have changed, right? When I was a newer superintendent, that is exactly what we would do. Before we went to court, we called DCP and P. And DCP and P would come and work with the family, work with us, and sort of scare the family into bringing the kids to school or, and/or, support the family in getting the kids to school. DCP and P is overwhelmed and understaffed. The courts are overwhelmed and understaffed. So now, when it gets to the point of my calling DCP and P, they make a note of it. And there's no longer any direct interaction with the family. They make a note of it. Certainly, we can follow up, and we do, we monitor that very closely. We once used, for a few years, we used grant funds to fund in each building a family liaison, whose responsibility it was to take that list and make a call every day and go to the home and try to intervene as they saw fit. We no longer have that grant, right? But our staff are very, very empathetic with families, and they work with them, making personal phone calls, the guidance counselors call. When I have had to go to court, it's been very extreme, and it has resulted in no, no change. So that isn't the direction I think we should spend our time on at this point. We will continue to work with the families. We provide Y counseling through the YMCA. We provide other mentor programs through Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And as Ms. Jackson said, we partner with universities who can work with our students directly in getting them to school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Alex Tronco, 067 Pilgrim Pathway in Ocean Grove. I just had a question. On the neptuneschools.org, there is the school budget twenty-five, twenty-six. Number th, I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. In the Neptune Township, neptuneschools.org has a listing of the school budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And when you look at that PDF, number three, it talks, it says, why have expenses increased despite declining enrollment? It mentions a number of things. It says, and a four-million-dollar charter school tuition bill in the context of diminishing state aid. I'm just wondering, what exactly is that and how is that directly contributing to?
That's a very good question. Charter schools are considered public schools. Although many people don't know this, the public school in that sending area is responsible for paying for that tuition. Our charter school tuition right now is about four million, a little more than four million, four million dollars. That's a lot of money that is going to another school. Even though, even though those students are living in our Neptune community, they are not attending the Neptune schools, they are attending charter schools.
Now, but why? Why are?
That's the law. That is something you need to advocate for as well.
And the other question would be, so four million dollars is going to this school. How many kids are enrolled at the school?
I don't have that number, but I can get it for you. Do you have an approximate number?
Roughly?
Two and twenty. It's fluctuated.
Yeah, so between two and three.
So four million divided by two twenty. Pretty good education, I guess, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So hold on, sir. You've already spoken. So you can't come back up because that's Robert's rules. We operate based on Robert's rules. I'm sorry. Everyone else in the audience who wishes to speak has to be given the opportunity to speak first. I'm sorry.
I didn't see anybody else getting up, that's why I came up.
No worries. Anyone else?
If else gets up, may I have the opportunity to at least talk some?
So we have others. I'll let, we'll address that when we get to it. Next.
My name is Donald Brecker. I live at three fourteen Highland Avenue in Sharp River Hills. The reason I'm up here is we've all heard explanations as to why the taxes have gone up. We've been asked to go to our legislators and tell them to refund the schools. Now, if we do that, and they do refund the schools, do we get a tax reduction? Or does the school still get our money that we're paying now?
I've never been asked that question before. If the taxes are assessed.
So I believe once the tax bill, the taxes are assessed, you gotta pay the money. But I'm not a township committee member, I don't know that. But I believe that there have been instances where the tax rate has gone down. I would love for us to be able to get the money back, but somehow I'm not sure how that's going to happen unless they give us more money.
If we're putting pressure on our legislators, and we can get some legislators in there who will reduce the taxes by paying the school districts what they deserve and what they hadn't been getting, I don't see why we have to continue to fund the same level to the school systems if the state money's coming back.
So here's the thing. It's a matter of whether the state money comes back, right? That's a big if, but there's increases in everything. We just heard about, you know, you're, we're all, most of us are homeowners. You know how your electric bill's gone up, your gas bill's gone up, the cost of insurance has gone up, the cost of healthcare's gone up. So it's difficult to say that a taxpayer would get money back. But what it would help is, it would mitigate increases, right? That we can say for certain. It would mitigate the increase. The issue, as Dr. Crater stated with the S-two, is it was confined to a seven-year period. Seven, I think, seven-year period. So to lose twenty-six million dollars over a seven-year period is unfathomable, right? If it were over a twenty-year period, we probably wouldn't feel it. You could prepare better. The other part is, in many instances, because I've been on this board for thirteen years, we would be told that we were going to lose two million, and we'd come back and be told later it's four, or four-point-four, okay? So it's just like with anything. We can't say, yes, if money is refunded, that you're going to get a refund because I would never tell you that I'm not.
Not necessarily a refund, but a reduction.
I can't say that.
Back to the levels before we had this.
As we know.
Monstrosity pushed on us.
Things rarely go back. So I can't speak to that, that's above my area.
So the only way that could happen correctly, if I'm wrong, Rose and Brittany, is if there was such excess surplus at the end of the year that we would use that to offset the next year. That's the only venue, or the only way that that could happen.
But the level we're at now, we will stay at, basically in perpetuity.
Yes.
If not higher. Thank you.
Right, and so that's why we are saying to advocate for a fair funding formula because as you're saying, if not higher.
I know why he couldn't see me when I was coming. So tall. My name is Maureen Ang. I've lived in Neptune since nineteen seventy-seven. This is the second house I own. I live at eight Vernon Avenue. Both of my adult children have gone through the Neptune Township School System. I understand the predicament that you're in. However, my taxes, people say, oh, taxes go up. Yes, my taxes went up forty percent in one year. That is unreasonable to expect, okay? And that's right in the ballpark. When I say that to people who live outside of the township and they've gone up forty percent, went, oh, you know, five percent, two percent, forty percent is unmanageable for most of the people that are in my neighborhood. The second thing I wanted to say is, my tax rate for the school system is, has continued to climb, and my taxes are now sixty-two percent of what I pay in taxes. So even though the board has kept their expenses at twenty-five percent, my percentage has gone up six to sixty-two percent. So it's really, it's very difficult. I have spoken to the legislators, our local legislators of Area Eleven, and I have said to them that we are now the poster child, Neptune is, for what is wrong with the funding system. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Please come forward.
Hi.
Arthur Atkins, fifty-five Tremont Drive, Neptune. I really didn't want to get up here and speak, but I'm here for a couple of minutes. Going to the charter schools real quick. I understand you're sending two hundred people to the charter schools at the cost of two million dollars.
Four million?
Four million dollars. Suppose we stay at, send another two hundred students. Who pays for that? We would have to pay for that also, right?
Yes.
So we're in a, a, a fighting for our lives. I am anyway, like a lot of people in here. I'm seventy-nine years old now. Can't afford the taxes. My reply that I got to the tax lady when I paid him in August, they were closed on Friday afternoon. I guess they gave the employees the day off every Friday. So I had to come back Monday. I had a couple in front of me, and they said, what are we going to do? We can't afford it. She says, well, if you can't afford it, we're going to pay eighteen percent on what you can't afford, and then we're going to foreclose on you, and you're going to be out of your house. I've been in Neptune since nineteen sixty-seven, and I'm close to that. What are we going to do? That's all I want to ask you.
Thank you. So the hope again is what we're going to do is we're going to advocate. We're going to advocate, I'm going to keep saying it. We're going to advocate for a fair funding formula. We also are going to send any resources, philanthropy that you have to the school district. We welcome that as well. So I remind you, I hear the comments in the, in the audience that it's too late. But what you have to remember, something that we keep saying, we're paying what we're paying now, but there's next year, right? So it's never too late. If you sit silent and you do nothing, then next year, there will be an additional increase if we do nothing. So it's not too late. We can't get, we can't get the horse back in the barn, but we can hopefully prevent other horses from getting out of the barn. I'll use that analogy.
Hi, my name's Joanne McCormick. I live at sixteen Saranian Drive. I don't do media. The only place that I ever read anything about what went on here is the Avebury Park Press and when I opened my tax bill. Thank you for educating me on where I could have gotten the information from so I could have started saving money. The only thing I have to say is that having to pay three thousand dollars in one year increase, I had to come up with a thousand dollars in three weeks, okay? My plan for next year is that I have to drop my medical insurance so I can pay everybody else's. Thank you. I've been living in Neptune since nineteen seventy-two.
I feel her pain.
My name is Karen Mason. I live on Cardinal Road in Neptune. There's so much passion going on here tonight, and the center of all of it is the children. But the facts are, we are all paying way too much. I'm going to be eighty in a year and a half, and my taxes increased fifty percent this year. It's insanity. So what happens when all of these people can't pay their taxes? Maybe you've had a mortgage on your house for thirty, forty years. You've paid your, you've paid your mortgage. It's your house, but they can take it for not paying your taxes. It's a very bad system. It doesn't work, it's not fair. It's not fair to all these people here. I come from a family of teachers. I believe in education. It's, it's needed, it's important, of course, it's vital. You're all doing the job you need to do, I understand. Thank you for clearing up a lot of information tonight. But the bottom line is, if Neptune loses seniors, other people, whom is going to pay? That's a reality. This could happen. If all of these properties are foreclosed, share of sale, it's not legal, it shouldn't be legal. It's not right, if you've had a house for thirty, forty, fifty years, to lose it in one year of not paying your taxes because you can't, not because you don't want to. The system is very broken, we all know it. I'm going to call my legislators tomorrow. I encourage every single person in this room, trust me, if they get a thousand calls in a week, you will see change. It's the only way it's going to happen. And if they don't do it, vote them the hell out. That is all I have to say.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for answering our questions. I know that's not usually the protocol. My name is Paul Owens, Twenty-One Atlantic Avenue, Ocean Grove. You know, and obviously, our attention is drawn to this matter because it affects us in our pockets. But specifically the question about the, when the board comes up with a budget. I was told that at one time, the voters had some say in approving the budget, and then it was changed to April. And I'm just wondering, we went to the township committee, and he said that they have no oversight to the Board of Education budget that is just submitted and it has to be, has to be paid. So I'm just wondering what oversight there is for the budget and whether or not there's an opportunity for the voters to be involved in that.
So in the early teens, when I first became a member of the Board of Education, the elections for the board and the budget, the elections were in April. At that time, you were able to, the taxpayer was able to vote yes or no on the budget. If the taxpayers voted no on the budget, then the budget came back to the school district. The school district met with the municipality, the county, to come up with an equitable budget. But they had to pass some type of budget. So the state converted to, or encouraged districts, to move to a November election under the auspices of saving money. So most districts moved to a November election. In doing so, and Neptune, I will tell you, was one of the last holdouts in the state of New Jersey for not moving to a November election. We moved to a November election. As a result of that, the taxpayers no longer vote on the school budget. And that has been the case that's across every district across the state of New Jersey who has an election in November. So it's not just, you know, it's not just Neptune.
So, you know, and, you know, I could come to my piece with that if I knew that there was someone who was overseeing it, you know, a disinterested party, like perhaps the Township Council.
It's not, okay, the Township Council's not a disinterested party.
Could be a bad example.
Let me see that. But we do have the county superintendents, we have the Department of Education that does supervise every budget that a school district presents. Has to be approved by them. So they are more disinterested parties, I would say. And Dr. Crater, you can add.
Yeah, and in addition to that, there is a great deal of oversight to the spending, right? So we have to go to the county office and sit through a mid-year budget every year as well. But to answer your question about your involvement in that budget process, you should know that there is a budget hearing in April advertised every year, and the board gets a presentation about the budget as presented by us administration. At that time, residents can come to the microphone and express their concern about anything that is presented.
Thank you, and I know my time's up, but. And I know my time's up, but if that budget distributed to the public in meetings, they can review it and come with questions?
It is not. It is afterward. But you can always look at the current year's budget for an idea of where that spending will be for the following year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm sorry. Hi, thanks for answering our questions tonight. Catherine Cleary, forty-five Abbott Avenue in Ocean Grove. So I have two questions. The first question is, there are towns in this state that get loans from the state government. Have we investigated anything like that? Because that might buy us the ten years that we need to figure out, which you keep saying, we've only have seven years. And if we had twenty years, so have we done that?
So yes, we have.
Okay, great.
We were like, oh, we can ask for a loan. The state is no longer giving loans. Am I correct, Dr. Crater?
You're correct.
No more loans. We thought, we'll take a loan. Because we have neighboring districts, Tom's River, Lakewood, Jackson. The state is no longer giving loans.
Well, that's disappointing. All right. My next question is, could you please go into a little bit more detail about this stakeholder committee, the plans for it, and how you are going to carry it out?
So right now, it is, as I said, just administrators doing research. So I held a meeting this morning. I've tasked administrators with different areas of research, including examine all the possibilities here for reconfiguration. Does any of them yield a savings in personnel, transportation, and facilities? Examine all the ways we're handling out of district special education. Is there a way to bring some of that cost back in district and save some money there? Is there a way to look at all of our curriculum and programs, delivery? And can we do that in a way that doesn't compromise the quality, but saves us some money? Those are examples of the areas. In terms of process, we will expand that committee once we gather that research and look at all the possibilities and come up with some prospects. We will then expand that committee to include some parents, some teachers, some community members, and bring that all to the public in a way that's more interactive, possibly asking for input on some of those ideas.
I said, I said I had two, but I have fifty-seven seconds left. Have we thought of, you know, we're, we're obviously not alone in what's happening here in towns around the state. Have we thought of joining some type of suit together and suing the state?
So we're, oh, go ahead. So years ago, when S two was first established, there was a group of superintendents who got together, myself being one of them, to talk about the possibility of suing the state. Our situation is so unique here that we did not opt into that lawsuit. And I think it's since dissolved anyway. The reason we didn't opt into that is because we are all Abbott funded. As Ms. Jackson said, we can't sell buildings. We have no leverage and we have state-of-the-art facilities. So whereas some districts who are funded by SDA have crumbling buildings and are desperate just for classroom space, our situation is different. And we did not want to be the poster child for, at that time, what was perceived as you're an overfunded district. Now it's your turn. So we did not, we opted not to do that.
Okay, maybe it's time to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Archie Starr, in Montreuil. The state's senior freeze program, doesn't that freeze your property tax bill when you're eighty-sixty-five?
If you apply for, we don't, that's not a Board of Education thing. That's more of a state and township committee. But you have to apply for it. But I think that you, uh, because my mom had it prior to her passing, I did an, uh, freeze application for her. And I believe it did freeze her taxes, but I can't speak to that with authority. You can apply for tax fees, but they keep changing those programs. So I can't speak to the new one. Because I just got something in the mail, not senior freeze, but the anchor rebate thing. So that, that's above my pay grade.
Yeah, because I heard that on the radio and I thought, what? That, that would alleviate everybody's big tax bill increase. It's called the senior freeze program. So if anybody over sixty-five, you're looking into it. No?
Is that how it works? You pay it upfront?
You have to pay it upfront?
Okay.
Okay, keep it over there. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good suggestion, though.
Donna Ryan, nineteen Vernon Avenue. I just have a question and something that you had said about if we all bombard the legislator and we get funding. You said we can't go back. But people can't pay the taxes now. And if we bombard them to get funding, shouldn't that come back to the people that are having difficulty now paying their taxes? Like, why would the school tax still be so high? Because it is, majority of our taxes is a school tax. So that's, I'm just wondering why we wouldn't be able to get a reduction, a reduction in the school tax if we're getting funding?
So as I mentioned, the only way, the only way that could happen is if we got, if we got a tremendous amount of state aid. Let's say the state aid tripled. And then we didn't need that money because we've already made several cuts. And at the end of the year, money fell from the trees, right? And that was excess. Then there would be a way to give that money back. But once the tax rate is established, it's established.
Because it's like we need a money tree to pay our taxes.
I understand.
So.
I understand.
It should come back to, to the people that want to stay living in Neptune.
Yeah, we all understand.
Getting pushed out.
I under, we all understand.
Getting pushed out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's somebody behind you. This one spoke already.
Wait, you already spoke already? You didn't speak, come up. Getting confused, bear with me.
I, I get questions because I've heard a couple of different things and whatever.
Did you see your name and your?
Sorry, my name is Henry Muller, three thirty-eight Glenmere Avenue. I'm over in Hills. Been in Neptune, my family, since nineteen fifty-eight. I've left and come back once, but most of my life. Anyhow, I've been reading your thing you handed out before the meeting. Are we still an Abbott district?
We are considered a.
Still considered a former Abbott district.
We are treated as an Abbott district.
So does that mean that the student teacher ratio mandate holds still? Even though we're no longer an Abbott district?
Yes.
What's the penalty if we violate that?
Probably loss of funding.
Okay, what is that ratio?
Uh, I would have to look that up. I don't have that number in front of me.
Oh, no.
The twenty, the number for class size is twenty-one.
Twenty to one?
Hey, no, twenty-one students in K to three. And then in grades four to five, if you keep those numbers, K to one, K to three, up to twenty-one, or down to twenty-one, you can raise the grades four and five.
What's the current ratio, student teacher ratio in Neptune on average? Because someone in the committee.
Wrong information.
Somebody, somebody in the committee that I watched online said it was one to nine.
What?
That's what they said.
I would have, I'm gonna have to look.
Okay, well, then, I didn't want to, I didn't want to come out saying that because.
Right, I don't want to.
I had a feeling that's incredibly low.
Yeah.
I mean, Little House on the Prairie had a bigger class. Okay? So, but I, I got up here to talk because I looked at, you know, the, the taxes of my house have increased since I, the house I bought, I bought in nineteen. My taxes since nineteen have gone up almost ninety-five percent. Okay, they're more than double. All right? And, and now I know why. I was just paying them before. Right? This last go-around just seemed to be so horrific. One clarity, one point of clarity is, I think, if we get more state funding, then the tax levy from the school will be less to the town. And the town will be able to lower their tax rate, which will indeed, which in turn will bring our tax dollars, our tax payments down on our houses. All right, to answer that question for everybody. Because I think, I'm pretty sure that's how it works. But have you looked long and hard? And I know everything you said, you know, where, and I know you're very passionate about the children and you should be, and I applaud that. But I know you've looked long and hard on ways to reduce costs. But having run large organizations, worked for the Army for thirty-three years, ran big organizations within the Army, worked for the federal government, just like the state government. Budgets are like this and it's very painful. So looking for cuts is a painful thing. It's an emotional thing. And I think over time, if this is going to continue, you're gonna have to look long and hard at some tough emotional cuts. I know you say we don't own the buildings and that if we sell them, that the profits go back to the state. In my opinion, I don't care. Because, because I'm not, and I don't think anybody here wants to be in the real estate business. I want to unload those unnecessary, that unnecessary square footage. Consolidate into the square footage that we need for the ratios that are appropriate for the children. And get that sustainment bill off of my tax bill. That's what we need to do. And what comes along with that, unfortunately, and it is very unfortunate, is a reduction in the corresponding staff. Because that brings down all of your healthcare bills and all the associated HR bills.
So I'll note that three years ago, I believe, we took our early childhood education center offline. And we put our students back in their homeschool district. But we have worked religiously to find an educational institution that would be willing to rent that building to provide us with income. We haven't been successful thus far. However, the school district still must pay because the state will not take the building back. So we still have to pay about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to keep that building online. We have to keep, you know, air, uh, whatnot, well, electric.
But that's to keep the building.
Online.
Online.
Yes. You can't just.
You said, you, you, you told me if you sold, you told us, if you sold the buildings.
So we, so we haven't.
Then you have to give the profits back to the state.
So here's the thing. The state only will allow the buildings to be used for educational use. We have not been able to find a partner. We thought we had a partner. Then COVID happened and.
So, so the statement you made, though, I'm just confused by the statement you made. I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay.
You said, if we were to sell the buildings.
Yes.
Then we would have to give the profits from the sale to the state. That tells me you can sell the building.
Well, sell the building. You can't really sell the, it's not that easy. We can't just sell the building. You have to have a.
So let me just explain the savings you would glean if you took another building offline, just because I know that that's something that I've heard out there, too. And you never want to close a building. It's a neighborhood school and people get very upset. But there comes a point when you.
Tough emotional decisions.
I'm agreeing with you.
All right.
But remember that the classes within a school have to go somewhere.
Yes.
If they're very small and another accepting school has very small, then that's where you save money. Because you combine two classes, you save one. You would save, if you closed a building, the cost of a principal, which we did at ECC. The cost of a secretary, the cost of a school nurse, and the cost of a custodian. So that savings.
But that's not the only savings. The sta, it's the statement of the facilities. Go ahead.
We still have to maintain insurance. And sometimes that's an increase. We have to maintain insurance. We have to maintain the utilities. We have to maintain the maintenance. We have to afford the maintenance. So some of that savings of that personnel would be offset by that. Not all of it. And that is one of the areas we're looking at.
So are all the buildings? Green Grove, which my brother and sister went to kindergarten in, nineteen sixty-five. Gables, which has been around forever. I know Summerfield is an Abbott-built school. Gables was very much renovated and enlarged by Abbott funding. Those are the Abbott buildings. Green Grove, are they owned by Abbott?
All of our buildings.
All of the buildings are owned by Abbott.
If they were touched by Abbott funding, if their ground was touched by Abbott funding, they are not ours.
Maybe we should also lobby to change that. Neptune is a declining district in student population, drastically since two thousand and five, going on two thousand students. With the declining population that we're looking at, we can't afford all of this. Like any business, we have to shed infrastructure. We have to shed costs. And that's very painful for a lot of people sitting in this room and sitting at the chairs there because this has been the school system that we've known all our lives. But unfortunately, times are changing and this district has to change with the times. And it needs to be modified. It needs to be shrunk with the student population. Staff, infrastructure, and real estate need to go down. That's painful and it's emotional. Just like the emotions going on in all these households that have to pay all this additional tax facing the possibility of losing those homes.
Thank you.
All right?
Oh, there's someone over there. Feel free to come up.
Good evening and thank you for hosting us tonight and answering our questions. Laura Lilla Smith, four oh-two Highland Avenue, Shark River Hills, Neptune. So my question is really about return on investment for the children. My children went through the school system successfully. I'm very happy about that. But what I've seen since I've lived here since twenty, two thousand and one, is that the school system continues to be in decline academically. To me, that's not acceptable. Where is the return on the investment? As a taxpayer, for the schools, it's acceptable for them to be, you know, four eleven out of five hundred and thirty-five schools. You, you know, if you, if you are a corporation, you guys, you know, you wouldn't be able to continue with that kind of performance record. I really, really think the performance record in the schools is also an underlying issue. And if we're gonna pay for this, we're gonna expect something back. And I don't see it coming back.
I understand your concerns also. And certainly we had hoped that our proficiency scores would be higher. I do want to read a list of some of the opportunities and successes we've had. And I just jotted down a few before I came here tonight. We have a model pre-K program so well-respected that we have visitors from all over the country coming to see our pre-K program. We were recently recognized at a conference at Rutgers for our pre-K inclusion program. As Ms. Jackson stated, tenth year as best community for music education. We're recognized for our work-based skills program at the high school. We have fifty years of a deaf ed program in which we integrate our deaf and hard-of-hearing students into the community along with their families. We have advisory councils, bringing parents into the picture for pre-K, Title I, multilingual learners, special education. We have resources that include a universal screener for dyslexia. We have a focus on guided reading. We have data teams to regular, regularly analyze building data. We have over fifty teachers trained in shelter, sheltered construction. Our teachers are exemplary in what they do each and every day. Our ROTC unit achievement award and Air Rifle National Awards. We have new math programs. We have standards-based report cards. We have STEM programs that focus on design thinking, computer science, engineering, gardening, applied digital skills, and environmental science. And with fifty-seven point six, that was two years ago, now closer to seventy percent of economically disadvantaged students and families, twenty-three percent of students who are classified as special education students, and still a chronic absenteeism problem, along with multilingual learners that continue to grow in population. We have, for three years in a row, met or exceeded all of our growth targets. I applaud the staff for doing that. And I do find it offensive when people say this is a failing school district. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tara Samuel, fifteen twenty-eighth Avenue. I, I feel for the people. I sat and listened and I understand Ocean Grove and Shark River's here. I don't see no one from Gables here and Sunshine. And I know a lot of people, they're owning a house and they're not complaining. And also, the man also said something about a school, close some schools out. I heard that if any school would be closed out, it would be like Shark River, right? Something like that? Am I correct? Okay, well, well, okay, well, that's what I heard. But I really do feel what they're saying. But we have other people downhill that owns that house. I didn't hear anyone from down here that owned that house. Didn't hear, like I said, I didn't hear nothing about Upwood Green Grove. I don't hear no one in that area or anything. And I'm, I'm, I understand what these people are saying. People are very emotional about it. And from the bottom of my heart, I feel bad. But the people from the other top, you know, the other area is not here complaining about their taxes. Just Shark River and Ocean Grove. Not one person from Gable, not one person from Sunshine. I know a million people that own their houses. I'm just saying though, but I know a lot of people that own their houses, and they're not here complaining about their taxes. And most of our kids, my daughter goes here, and y'all saying that it's a feeling, you know, where's the compassion? Like my daughter, I'm a single mother, and my daughter goes to the school, and she's a high honor. And she goes to school, would you miss one day because your sister graduated from college? There's kids like her that do go to Neptune, that shows up all the time. This is not a filling school right now. At all, not to me. I love Neptune. I deal with the community. I deal with all these kids all the time, all the time. And I understand, and I feel what you guys are saying, you know? But there's other people that lives in Neptune in different areas that's not here complaining. And I know their taxes are going up as well as you guys. Yeah, they're not here, but they're not complaining. Okay, you say what you want to say, but I'm just telling you that. I'm just saying.
What we are going to do, we're not talking to each other. Comments are directed to the president. We're not going to allow this meeting to get out of order. You've done a great job so far of modeling behavior for our students, and we're going to continue to do that. Thank you.
I'm just saying, you guys, to me, are doing a fabulous job, and I'm going to continue on supporting the board as much as possible for my daughter here, because she loves Neptune. Thank you.
Gary Brown, Corner Road, Neptune. I think if you look around, most of the people here are probably retired, so that's why we're able to come here. Most of the people that aren't here, that can't be here, are probably working so they can pay the taxes. But I'm, I'm just speaking for them. I mean, I could see who's in the audience, and they're all probably my age or more. But I, I'm going to mention something that probably won't be popular. But I've been here for thirty-three years. I don't have any kids. And I never had a problem with contributing to my taxes for the schooling, because I, I do care. But when you get sixty-five, sixty-six, maybe it would be nice if, if we could have like a flat payment. So I'm paying the same amount now as somebody that has three or four kids that are going to this school. I don't, personally, I don't see how that's fair. I'm retired, no kids, paying the same amount as somebody with three or four kids. Maybe we can, I know it's not you, but I'm just making a blanket statement that I don't know why the burden should be on us more than people that have three or four kids going to school. I mean, I don't think we shouldn't pay anything. I'd like to contribute. Uh, you know, I, I like, I love Neptune. I worked in Overbridge. I love Neptune. I'm staying here. Taxes are a problem, and it's, pie chart, a piece of that pie is to, for the best.
Work on that legislation, sir.
Well, yeah, but that, okay. We'll try that.
Lobby.
Yeah, well, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So if you'd like to speak, I would like you to come up and stand in line if you're able to stand. If not, we'll try to pull up a chair. We're just trying to gauge how many speakers we have. You have to wait, sir.
Well.
In the white. Have you spoken, both of you? You have to wait.
Yeah, no, we know.
So we're gonna start with, is there anyone else in the audience who has not had an opportunity to speak, ma'am? Anyone else in the audience, please come forward. You guys, you can have a seat, have a seat. Anyone else in the audience who has, we see you, we, we hear you, we will acknowledge you. Anyone who has not spoken yet, please stand, and we will recognize you first.
Hi, Rachel Francilla, I live in Ocean Grove on Pilgrim Pathway. I was reading a little bit about other Abbott districts that also lost something, and I'm sure they're in a similar predicament. And I think this, a similar issue happened in Plainfield, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and they did not increase the taxes like we have. Is there a reason why other districts don't have to increase the taxes to such extreme percentages, and we do?
So according to the state funding formula, it's made up of different things. And Neptune is not, what is the word, at full.
Adequacy.
Adequacy.
Or fair share.
So, or fair share. So according to the state, our taxpayers are not paying their fair share. So even though, I, I, don't shoot the messenger. Don't shoot the messenger. So even though they might be a former Abbott district, they could be paying their fair share, and they could be at adequacy. Neptune is neither.
So is Neptune the only Abbott district that is not paying their full share?
No, because long range.
So there were a number of districts that were allowed to raise the tax levy by more than the typical two percent tax. And those districts had to have two things be accurate. They had to be below adequacy, which is what the state deems they should be spending for their children. And that depends on who their children are. Free and reduced lunch, special education, multilingual learners, that kind of thing. So they had to be below adequacy, which we were, and they also had to be below the local share or adequacy threshold, which is the number that the state determines that the community should be contributing to the taxes. So these numbers come from the state, and the difference between those two amounts was the amount that the tax levy could be raised. So other districts were given that opportunity. Some took all of the money, some, like us, took some of the money. It depended on how much money they took as to the percentage.
Okay, and then my other question is, and, you know, I, I'm not familiar with how charter schools are allowed to get money from local districts. I imagine it's, if a district is not performing to, to, they can, if a district is not performing as well as, say, they claim it should be, then they can get funding, but why is?
So that's.
That's not curious.
So, so how, how are we, I'm just, I guess I'm curious to know, how do they get approved to be funded? And why are we on the hook?
That's the law. The law was that parents, it gives, gives parents a choice as well as school choice. And when charters are approved, they're approved in your area. The district in which the, the, the students live, the home district, they're responsible for paying the bill. Now, it's very clear, there's a misconception that charters start in districts that are underperforming, bad. That's not always the case. In fact, many charters don't have to have certificated teachers. Their test scores are lower than traditional public schools.
But there's no oversight.
There is no oversight. However, legislation says that the money follows the student. That's legislation. We can't do anything about it. So if a parent who lives in Neptune Township wants to send their child to a charter school, we must pay that bill.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my confusion is, why are there charter school, like, how does that?
They apply and they receive permission.
Who and?
The State of New Jersey Department of Education.
So the Department of Education. And why do they not apply and say, you know, a town like, you know, a, a town, say, like Warren Township?
Okay, you picked a great town. My sister lives in Warren Township.
That's, that's where I grew up.
Okay.
I was the superintendent there.
And so I can speak to this fully. Warren Township is an affluent district, and the families pay fully for their students' education. They also do not have an influx of students coming from other countries. They don't have an influx of, they have minimal free and reduced lunch if any. So it's a very different, you're looking at apples and oranges. Education is up here for them, right? Because they don't have the, what do we, we call them the, what's the word? It's challenges to education. It's not challenges. It's, they don't have those.
Impediments?
Impediments, like having to work, having to care for siblings, not speaking the language, coming to our country. Remember, the Constitution of New Jersey states that we will, we will educate every student, provide a fair and equitable education to every student. So Neptune, we have an influx of, influx of students coming from all around the world, right? Many of the students we get, sometimes they're seventeen, eighteen years old. They haven't been to school. But we are required to educate them if they receive special services until twenty-one. It costs money. It costs money.
And just to shed some light on the charter process. So anyone can start a school if they develop a charter and that charter is approved. And many times, those charter schools are run by corporate organizations.
Yes, I, yes.
So.
I, I'm over.
I'll try not to be, I'll try not to disparage our charter schools, but.
College, I, I know College Achieve has been.
The news.
Yes.
So I think if I could suggest another area to lobby and advocate for is to have more oversight for those charters. Because, believe me, if there is a charter, a creative idea out there, and it works to educate children, sign me up. But that is not what I seek. I would advocate for more oversight and also for removing the obligation for public schools to fund charter school tuition.
And there is no option as a taxpayer to say, I don't want to fund a charter school.
So what you can do, though, is when they have the hearings for the charter schools, the new charter schools, you can show up. Because there's always public hearings when they're looking to either expand the grades for the charter schools.
Right.
Or to open additional charter schools. But many times, people don't know about it, and you don't know until it's there.
Right.
And it's too late.
Okay.
And as you said, there's zero accountability.
So just to clarify, the taxpayers have no say in a charter school?
That's correct.
Okay, it is the, the Department of Education state.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kathy Carroll. I live in Ocean Grove, seventy-three Franklin Avenue. And I'm a lifelong educator. My question is, I'm hearing a lot of numbers being thrown around. My tax rate went over, up over thirty percent this year. I'm a retired teacher, and I have given my life to education. My question to the Board of Education is, we're already months into the process for the next year. What is the board going to do? And what do we get back for, in any kind of negotiation? What do we get back for being allowed to raise our taxes this high? And what's the guarantee that we're not going to see another thirty percent next year?
Guarantee? I can talk about the guarantee. If the funding continues to decline, there is no guarantee.
Well, that's my question.
There is no guarantee.
So we could be looking at thirty percent?
So if we assume a flat state aid, which is eight million dollars right now as compared to thirty million dollars. If we assume a flat state aid, we believe, and we're looking for confirmation from our auditor, we believe that we will be okay next year, doing exactly what we were doing. I don't believe, I don't think the government will allow us to increase taxes by more than that two percent cap again, because they've taken so much heat from doing that. I don't believe we'll have that opportunity again.
But we could have it the following year.
I don't know that until I get confirmation of what the projection is.
My question, I guess, really is what you just said about that we only took partial funding.
We only took part, what do you?
So another. So the increase that you could have taken is only partial, so there is still a greater risk.
It was a one-time thing.
We believe it was a one-time.
It was a one-time thing.
But you don't have anything in writing?
I don't have plans to take more of that money.
Okay, and then the other piece of it is, you know, we have all this property that we don't technically own. What is the board doing towards petitioning the, petitioning the state that this is a liability more than an asset?
So we have been talking to the SDA. What we're trying to do is get a list of, see, all of these properties are then bonded, right? So they're sold, the mortgages are sold and sometimes resold. We're trying to get, although we haven't been successful, they're, they're, they're short-staffed as well, I'll put it that way. We're trying to get clarification on what exactly the status of each of these buildings is. How much of the sale would have to go back to SDA? We need to have those tangible answers so we can plan for long-term stability.
And is there any idea of when you might get those information?
You've been asked all the time for, yeah, well over a year.
Thank you.
Three Solomata, three ten Highland Avenue. I'm learning a lot here tonight, so thank you for that. I want to get some clarification on the charter school. You mentioned it's, it's owned by corporations?
So College Achieve is owned by a board of directors that have corporate ties.
So it's a for-profit organization?
It is a not-for-profit organization from my understanding of it.
Oh, so it could be, but it's, and it's on the back of our tax, us taxpayers, saying that. And how many charter schools are there?
There are three.
In our, in our area?
Yeah, Hope Academy.
We've got Hope Academy, Academy Charter, College Achieve, and then we have.
Oh, Sisters, Sisters.
Oh, Sisters Academy is a four, and Deal is a choice school.
Yes, we have four.
So we have four and a choice school.
And that's the four million dollars?
Yes.
And they're all separate buildings?
Yes.
Yes, and owned by different people.
And you can't consolidate them?
We don't, we don't have anything.
We don't have any control over them?
We don't have anything to do with them.
So legislators, I guess, we're going to legislators.
You're gonna be frequenting Trenton a lot.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Sinin, one hundred Clinton Place, Shawville Hills. A question for the administrator. Okay, it's four million dollars for charter schools, right? There's two hundred students. How much does it cost to educate a student in this school?
So I gave that number. Although the gentleman disagreed.
Twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so the charter school would be twenty thousand a student.
Uh, what do we pay?
Divide two hundred into four million.
What do we pay money per student for the charters?
We haven't gotten any, any new tuition bills.
We get a new tuition rate each year.
Yeah, they, we haven't seen the new bills yet. You know, we haven't gotten.
Well, do you know what the figure is to educate each student?
Okay, sir, you can't ask people in the audience.
Okay. What I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is it's cheaper for charter schools, maybe we'd be more, we'd need more charter schools.
It's not.
I just did the math. I just did the math. It's cheaper.
So they gave you a round number, sir? It was a round number. It's not an actual number. And one thing I'm going to share with you about charters. They take the students in September. There's two cutoffs where funding goes, October fifteenth and one in February. If the student has an IEP, an individualized, individual, individualized education plan, which means they need special attention, special services. They take the money, they send the student back. The money stays at charter, because they're not equipped to educate those students. If the student is an, is a non-English, an MLL, multi-language learner, they will take those students, knowing that they can't offer them any services. The money stays with them. They'll send us a student back in January. We have to educate that student, even though the money stayed with the charter. So as a public, traditional public school, we have to, I've already said this, we have to educate every child. Every child. We can't cherry pick which children we want to educate. Charters can do that. We can't do that. So it may cost us more because of the population that we're actually serving.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who has not yet spoken who wishes to speak? If so, please come forward at this time. Seeing none?
Oh, wait, or it's one more.
Come forward, sir.
That'd be it, okay.
Sure. My name is Rich Tulp. I live in Shaw River Hills. We came a little bit late to the meeting. Just wondering what plan the state has for dealing with this crisis, if anything? Do they have a backup plan to say that you're now ending one program, but maybe they're, or we're limiting it, but maybe there's other programs that they're going to develop?
Are you talking about?
Are you talking about the funding formula?
Yes.
That's still in discussion. They don't have a new funding formula yet. That's not in place yet.
Yeah, okay.
So we have no idea.
Do they have a timeline of when they plan to get?
I've been talking to them since two thousand and eighteen.
Because it's, it seems that that's, well, maybe, maybe we just need to shake up the state a little bit by changing who we vote for. Might be the answer for some of us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Last call for anyone who has not spoken who wishes to speak. The two gentlemen can come up, then we'll, oh, oh, you guys are losing your time. You go, you might lose your time tonight. I'm trying to help you out here.
I don't really have a question.
What is your name?
Rachel Jobs, West Bangs Avenue, and I'm not happy about the tax increase either. I was here last month, and I'm also a firm supporter in Tommy Walsh and all that that Last month, I heard a lot of criticism of the teachers and the board, and it really upset me. I heard a lot of judgment on, we only had a one, I think the board said it was a one percent of Ivy League acceptance rate, and that is higher than the country's average. And I just wanted to point that out, in my son's year, they had two Ivy League acceptance. And my son is at Stockton, he's a lead RA, just today got his position increased, he's in the honors program, he's an amazing student, and obviously, you get out of school what you make it. What else did I want to say? I was one of those extensive cuts, I'd like to say, those emotional cuts. I dedicated a lot to Neptune, but it's also like, don't pick on my mama, because Neptune is mine. As far as the graduation rates, I really get upset with that as well. I liked hearing the increase today, I think it was eighty-something, eighty-six, maybe? And what a lot of people don't realize is that eighty-six percent includes everyone, like was just pointed out, all the multi-language learners, all of our special ed department, which I also have another student with, that graduated with a special ed, it was in the special ed department. A lot of kids, what people don't realize also is the graduation requirements for the New Jersey doesn't always equal the school's requirement. So when we graduate a student, they might not graduate with a language, so the state doesn't recognize that they graduated. So that counts against the school, I know you all know this. However, I know a lot of the public does not know this. I've heard a lot of chatter about the charter schools, and I've seen it as a classroom teacher, after that October fifteenth cutoff, you get an influx of children into your classroom because a charter school kicks them out. So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Okay, this is honestly the last call for anyone who has not spoken who desires to speak. Okay, gentlemen, you have a hard stop at three minutes each. Don't talk to the public, ask questions, because you've already spoken. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, he threw it out again. Just, I have one comment and.
Questions, sir, or comments, questions, if you're to address questions.
Okay, I, we all want to go home.
No, it's not that we want to go home, we want to be fair. So if you have a question, you may ask your question.
Is the relief, the exception to the tax levy, is that a one-time application?
That is my understanding of it. Everything I read, you know, you can't get a confirmation from anyone at DOE often, but everything I read tells me that that was a one-time opportunity. When I asked the question of the county, the county said, I said, is that, is this a one-time opportunity? And she said, probably. When I go on the Ed Law Center, and I encourage you to go on there too, it's very clear, the description says, one time only.
Thank you. And I want to break the rules, there is six billion dollars in the rainy day fund in the state. I guess they're going to hold on to it for some emergency, so I guess this is not emergency, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Zapko, Ocean Grove, again, eighty-five Pilgrim Path. You talked about some things you're doing, but I want to raise some questions about some cost-saving strategies that maybe you've considered, maybe you haven't. You know, have you looked at vendor contracts? Are you leveraging technology to find efficiencies when and where possible? Are you looking at energy efficiency savings? You know, strategic staffing in terms of hiring freezes, reducing overtime where possible? Have you consolidated your suppliers? Are you working with your vendors and implementing some changes there? Have you automated processes, especially administrative processes, take advantage of AI where you can? And last, but not least, most important to me, are we looking at regionalization? Have we looked at shared services, collaborating with neighbor districts to share, you know, transportation, to share maintenance, administrative functions, as well as perhaps consolidate districts? And I just want to say, I'd like to hear from the board an acknowledgement, you know, we said no finger pointing, but there's been a lot of finger pointing tonight, back to the legislature, and they deserve it. But I did not hear anything from the board that was an admission that they have a responsibility to the property taxpayers in this township. And I'd like to hear you guys say that you owe us to look at some of the things that I outlined, and as well as, you know, some sort of admission of some culpability or responsibility here for not, perhaps, doing everything that that gentleman said. Hard decisions, that's where I live.
Sir, sir, I would like you to hear my response.
Okay.
Okay? So many of the things that you stated, our district is currently doing, in fact, the majority of them. I can't speak to the AI, but everything else you said, we have done or are currently doing.
Regionalization?
We have, we researched regionalization five years ago and ten years prior, because Dr. Krater's been here for ten years.
Different points in time now, different points in time.
Sir. I let you speak. You don't go back and forth with me, because as a board, we don't have to answer your questions. We're doing so because we want you to be informed. But I will not allow you to interrupt me, interject and go back and forth, I won't do it. It's not productive, and I'm not going to do it.
Okay, I apologize, but I do want to also say.
Sir, you had your opportunity to speak, your opportunity is gone. What I'm saying to you is that we have implemented the things that you said, all of them, except for the only thing I don't know about is AI. I can't speak to that because that's a day-to-day operation. But I've been here long enough to see the changes that we have done. Regionalization in terms of blending schools with other districts does not always equate to a cost savings, because Neptune does not owe, we have no debt. So I will give an example of several years ago, we were looking to, at the request of Neptune City, regionalize with Neptune City. Neptune City had just built Woodrow Wilson School, and they already send their students to our high school, but they asked us to look at regionalization. Had we done that, that would have cost Neptune Township residents more money, because Neptune City had just built Woodrow Wilson School. So we declined the opportunity to regionalize. That's just one example during my tenure. Speaking for the board, because the board does not speak, only the president speaks. We take full responsibility for the tax increase. As I said, we all are taxpayers. We all are taxpayers. We are paying the bill. We are not dodging that we increase the taxes by twenty-five percent. We take ownership of that. But that was our tough decision to make. That was our tough decision. So thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your lecture.
So just to add to that, I do want to respond to your questions also about some of the cost savings. We have automated many of our processes, especially in maintenance, personnel and transportation. We operate on a tiered transportation system where our buses, we save a lot of money and get a very high productivity rating because we use same-bus three routes during the day. We participate in co-ops for purchasing and co-ops for transportation. Our vendor process, our vendor selection process also involves public bidding laws, so many times, we have to take the least expensive opportunity, and we do take advantage of every kind of shared service we can find. That makes sense. But thank you for the question.
I have just a quick question, and I heard mentioned before about the Aquatic Center. I know that other schools, swim teams use our Aquatic Center. Is Neptune reimbursed for them using it?
Yes.
As?
That's how the Aquatic Center is self-sustaining.
Okay, that's, I wanted to make sure of that, because I know, to be honest, my great nephew is the swim coach, but I didn't know whether the, I know they were using the Boys and Girls Club in Ashbury Park, and a lot of them came over here because of the great facility we have. And I just wanted to make sure that the other school districts are paying.
Yes.
Neptune for the use of it.
They are, yes.
They are.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this concludes our public comment, we thank everyone for hanging in there with us, and we do appreciate your comments, we appreciate you coming out. We invite you to come out, not just when there's a tax increase, but we invite you to come out to see what we're doing, because we really would like you to see during the school year how great our students really are. We have student performances from September to June, and we'd like you to be a part of our community. As I said before, we are welcome to any philanthropic opportunities that might be in the audience. We know that everyone may know people, we are open to that. So feel free to send anyone you may know to Dr. Krater's way, we appreciate that. We will continue with the rest of our meeting. Mr. Hubbard, can I ask you to move our superintendent's report? Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Madam President, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under superintendent report as per, as per document A, item one through ten, so moved.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Hubbard, seconded by Ms. Jones, board members, any questions? Ms. DelaSala, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
First?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. West, can you move our education and special projects items, please?
Thank you, Madam President, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under transportation, as per document B three, items one through nine, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Thompson, seconded by Ms. Harris, board members, any questions? Ms. DelaSala, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. DelaSala. Vice President Thompson, can you move our transportation items, please?
Thank you, Madam President, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under transportation, as per document C one, item one, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Vice President Thompson, board members, any questions? Ms. DelaSala, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, can you move our special education items, please?
Thank you, Madam President, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under education slash special projects, as per document C one, item one, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Vice President Thompson, board members, any questions? Ms. DelaSala, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, can you move our special education items, please?
Thank you, Madam President, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under education slash special projects, as per document C one, item one, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Vice President Thompson, board members, any questions? Ms. DelaSala, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. DelaSala. Mr. Hubbard, can you move our education and student activities items, please?
Thank you, Madam President, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under education and student activity, as per document C three, item one, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Hubbard, seconded by Ms. Jones, board members, any questions? Ms. DelaSala, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. I believe, is there, I don't believe there's any new board business to come before the board, however, we would like to wish our educators, our administrators and our students a wonderful start to the school year next year. We're expecting great things, and know that the board is here to support you in all of your efforts. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Been moved, been moved by Vice President Thompson, seconded by Mr. Hubbard, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for coming out again, and get home safely.
Thank you.